Order the blank commission meeting Tuesday, May 27, 2025 to order. Christian, will you please pledge, please?
Pledge, yes, sure.
Pledge of reasons.
To defy and to have a state of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christian, will you please give a pledge, please?
Yes. Dear heaven and mother, in the name of Jesus, I just pray that you give us the words to be clearly and concisely in matters that are being brought before this commission and with this all an open mind, an open heart to make the decision that's best for all parties involved. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Okay, and do I hear a motion to adopt so that it's adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hopefully you all got a chance to look over the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, and I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first piece of new business. Ms. Elizabeth, will you present? Let's know what's going on.
All right, good evening, questioners. One quick item, so normally we would have the applicant come up and introduce the case first. Would you like to-
I'm sorry, yes.
Follow that format, okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Brainerd, would you like to come up and talk about the request you have before it's done?
Sure. Thank you for hearing our case. Gary Brandon and I represent Pembroke Mackey, who owns Cherokee Closeouts and the whole shopping center over there, including the restaurant in the shopping center. We bought the shopping center about a little over two years ago, and we really didn't do anything other than trying to fill the locations with tenants and get people just to make the area better. The, in the meantime, we had filled all the spaces out, and J.C.'s Market is one where they had a, I don't know if you remember the dry cleaners. If I can, I'd like to bring this up to you and let you pass around if it's okay. The first picture is what, here is the sign that was previously there, which is 18 foot long. It's 18 foot long. The second one is where that, the little white circles is where the mounts were. This just showed that the change in size of the, what the sign looked like before and then the size of where it took up the roof for the top of the building there and what we went to now. I understand we went out a little bit older, and that was based on the owner of the company. And I'm here representing the company, but what happened was he was trying to help the tenant get the signs, get it, and I think, is it Ryan Ledbetter? Noticed that the sign had been put up. I didn't even know it was put up because I wasn't watching anybody out there that day. Ryan came over, he had already approached J.C.'s Market, and he said, "We had nothing to do with it. It just showed up and they put it up." And I agree with that, came to me and I said, "I'm the same way." The owner was trying to act proactive and try to help them get their sign up and get, you know, ready for them to open. The, so I measured the facade, just when we found out we needed to go through some channels there, measured the front. However, the side of the building also has a door, and that's 65 foot long. We, the sign that was made prior to getting approval was 32 square feet. And based on the measurement of front is 24 foot, so that'd be 24 square feet is what we're allowed. However, the side of the building also faces road, if I understand facades and what the, you can have more than one because you can enter, actually, there's a drive-up window right there or door, and it faces the road. Now, it faces courthouse, might not be as, I don't know that we want to put the sign there, but I'm asking for, allows to take that into consideration that we've got the footage, but we would like to keep that sign at the, it's eight feet over its variance of the 24 square foot. So, you know, knowing how things went, we would have handled it differently if I'd have been involved to begin with because I knew about the, getting approval and taking, you know, Elizabeth now. So, I just appreciate your time and hope that you'll take that into consideration. We feel like we're making the area look better. We're not, we're not trying to make it look worse. We do want to do a lot more to the building, update the building and repay the parking, or not repay it, but re, put the dark top on the parking lot and put new lines out. So, there's more that we want to do, but we got, and we'll find out what we have to do on that with you before we do it. So, I appreciate your time and appreciate your consideration as far as being able to stay at 32 square feet, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brainerd, for that additional context. So, as Mr. Brainerd stated, our first item is a sign variance request for J.C.'s Family Market. They're located at 55 Burn Mountain Road in the Cherokee Closeout Center. They're requesting a sort of retroactive variance to increase the building sign area from 24.1 square feet to 32 square feet or an increase of 7.9 square feet. So again, the subject property, this is the Cherokee Closeout Center. It's located west of the intersection of Pioneer Road and Burn Mountain Road. It's approved with the shopping center that was built in or around 1977. Moving from west to east, we have J.C.'s Family Market, Cherokee Closeout, Family Dollar, and Northside Curiosity. And as Mr. Brandon stated, and you may recall, J.C.'s is where the Jasper Discount Cleaner location was previously located, and they closed in recent years. So, a bit more of the site context from the ground, to the north is Court, the Court Street Extension, and across the street is the Overflod Courthouse Parking. To the east is Cherokee Closeout. To the south, across railroad tracks is Walgreens, and to the west is the newly redeveloped Hensley Plaza. So, the applicant is requesting a variance to increase the sign area to accommodate the existing sign. Our sign ordinance currently allows for one square foot of signage per linear foot of the subject tenant facade. So, as measured by Mr. Brandon, since J.C.'s has 24.1 linear feet of facade right here, they would be allowing the 24.1 square feet of sign area on this particular facade. But since this sign was installed unfortunately without a permit, this was sort of realized after the fact that it was oversized at 32 square feet. Accordingly, the applicant is seeking that variance relief to keep this existing sign. So, a little bit more context that I did want to highlight with respect to the existing conditions. So, Cherokee, this overall center has a legal non-conforming pole sign that is at least double, if not more than what would currently be allowed. And so, J.C.'s has a 50-square-foot tenant panel on this monument sign that they did get a permit for. And just to give you a little bit of comparison of what this affords them, if this sign were to go away and they were to redo it today, the entire sign for all of the tenants, Cherokee, Family Dollar, J.C.'s, and Northside Curiosity would be limited to 64 square feet. So, you know, this really does afford them a decent amount of signage that they would not get otherwise under our current code. And so, I think that that context is important. This sign also affords them, from a practical perspective, most of their visibility. However, you know, I do want to acknowledge from a practical standpoint as well that they are, you know, on the far side of the center, this area is depressed, below grade with the railroad tracks and everything, and it is just kind of an awkward sight. So, when we evaluate a sign variance, we've gone through this criteria numerous times before. All of the sign grants is over at Gateway Crossing. There are three different hardships areas that can be considered. So, the first is that where proximity of existing signs, adjoining lots, mix of property, ineligible for the type of sign solved. That is not the case here, as there are no spacing requirements for wall signs. The second criteria is that the conditions were not created by the property owner. Here again, because the sign was unfortunately installed without a permit, you know, this hardship to get the retroactive variance was created by the property owner. The third criteria is where variances are limited to the minimum relief necessary to overcome the hardship. And in this case, you know, there's not these spacing requirements for wall signs. But in addition to that, you know, they do benefit from that legal non-conforming pole sign that does afford them a significant amount of visibility on Burn Mountain Road, which is the most well-traveled frontage that this property has. And then, the fourth condition, which is really kind of a sub condition, is that variance relief shall not be granted to allow for a greater number of signs than is currently allowed. You know, since the artist requesting the additional area here, that is met in essence. But again, there is not necessarily a demonstrable hardship, you know, pursuant to the other criteria. So, with that, staff is recommending denial of the variance request due to failure to comply with the hardship criteria in our sign ordinance. However, if you all do find merit in the request, staff does recommend a condition that the total sign area should not exceed 32 square feet or wall signage on this front tenant facade. So, with that, I will be happy to answer any of your questions.
How long has the sign been up?
Several months, I would say.
Well, yeah, we put it up and then, I'm sorry, could, we, I don't know, Zach-
Approximately, yeah, probably two, three months, so, yeah, two or three months.
I believe the sign permit application was submitted in February.
Has anyone filed a formal complaint about the sign being too big?
No, the only reason is that staff observed that it wasn't installed without a permit, but we haven't received any complaints from the general public.
Okay, so there's no hardship to the community or nobody's, nobody has a problem?
No, we have not received it.
Personally, when it comes to the size of this sign versus the sign of the cleaners, I mean, I distinctly remember the sign of the cleaners, and it was atrocious compared to what we have before. And I think we have a unique perspective to be able to look at the sign that's already in place, whereas typically we're both making the recommendation on an idea of how it's going to work.
And I do want to note, this is kind of a benefit of the admission, our sign ordinance did change probably since the cleaner sign was installed. So, back then, it used to be that you would get 10% of the, like, overall area of the facade. So, let's say that J.C.'s, you know, is 24 feet wide, 15 feet tall, 360 square feet, they would have been allowed a 36-square-foot sign, you know, under the former code, but our current code is regulated differently, and so that may be why the dry cleaning sign was a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I would just add, even based on a larger sign, you still cannot read it from the word. So, I would be inclined, I don't know the rest of the commission, but I'd be inclined, since there's nobody that has a problem with it, why would we push a business to change the sign or want them to be widely successful? I would, I would vote to make an exception a lot of the reasons.
I think it's a very unique location for the business, and it's, the sign is appropriate. I haven't been able to drop by and look at it in multiple different angles, and I think it's appropriate size for the location of where it's at, considering it's tucked back in the corner a little bit, so.
You said that you've owned this property for two years?
Two and a half, something like that. They, the owner, he bought it, but I just managed it.
Okay. Did you get the proper permits for the signs that you put on for your businesses or for the other businesses?
Well, yes, the signs were done, when the owner had one put on, that one, he had the same company put a sign in the middle, which is lit up in the middle. He had them both done at the same time. Since then, we have gone and paid the, paid to have it approved and paid the penalty on it for that sign, but that's over Cherokee Closeout.
And they were pre-existing when you purchased it? Are we, those signs were pre-existing then, when you purchased the property?
The other signs were pre-existing, yes. There's just one in the middle of the, I don't have a picture of that now, but it, Cherokee Closeout.
The Cherokee Closeout.
Yeah, it's just the middle one.
Can you see it?
Yeah, you can kind of see it in the white part right there. Just a small sign right there that's.
That was actually included in the same permit application where we identified the oversized issue with J.C.'s. So, that was back in February.
Do you know if this is going to be affected with the, with some of the work that they're going to be doing out there with the roundabout and going past that way with the road expansion?
I'm not aware of that, no, I do not know. I don't know that, haven't seen the, the details of all the roundabout. Guess need to find out about that, too.
You might be a little bit more insulated since you're on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much past there, the railroad tracks are actually going.
Yeah, I couldn't see if you'd take it into the railroad tracks, I don't think that'd be a problem, but.
Since there's a side entrance, is that taken into consideration that that's considered frontage as well?
So, not with respect to wall signage. So, frontage, we take that into consideration more so when we're talking about monument signs and what would be allowed for a monument, but wall sign, we really just kind of look at the individual tenant facade.
So, this is, so, I'm clear, the, this ordinance is based off of this being a shopping plaza?
Yes, so when you have a multi-tenant center with separate tenant entrances, each tenant is afforded one square foot of signage per linear foot of their facade.
So, how would that relate to the Chicken Salad Chick and the adjacent building? I think that's going to be the, or the Smoothie Place or the-
Yes, Chocolate Smoothie. So, with both of those, they, you can, two of your tenant facades can have signage, but again, they are also afforded the one square foot per linear foot of the subject facade upon which the sign is applied.
And they're complying?
Yes, they are, both did comply. But like J.C., they also benefit from the monument signage as well.
Yeah.
I was only inquiring about that, if it, if the expansion included, you know, something like this because the Fifth Theory Expansion, so all the pole signs and stuff, because they are no longer conforming will be removed and not being able to put back. So, this type of, some sort of expansion or anything replacement on this would be, would not be allowed.
Yeah, it could take the sign out, you're right.
Right, so if that sign came out, then they would be afforded the same, the 64 square feet that Ellie spoke about earlier.
Is that just a, always 64? Is there a calculation to that 64? How is that?
So, it's based on the linear footage of the property's frontage. So, if you have under 200 linear feet of frontage, you're only afforded 40 square feet. If you have more than 200, you are afforded 64 square feet.
Except if you have frontage on 515, that's different. You get to go more in there, taller and, I guess, what, 25 or not.
Yeah, they get 25 square feet, and then they get half a square foot per linear foot of their frontage, so they can get some pretty big signs.
Are there any questions from anyone in the audience or? Anybody? Or can I make a motion to approve or deny at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve. I think it's appropriate. I think that, I mean, it's already there, it's not, it's a very clean-looking sign. I think it's been added to the, the area, and so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, would you want to do it with the conditional asset?
Yes, with the conditional asset.
Okay, I hear first, so I hear second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to approve it with the condition set of no more than 32 square foot wall signage on the facade. All right, is anyone here in the audience representing item number two on the agenda?
Yes. Is it okay if we both come up? Okay. I'm Jennifer Mayberry, I'm the Business Operations Manager of Cradle, and this is Brian Mayberry. My husband, he handles all the manufacturing plant operations, and so he's going to help me out here where I might misstep a little bit, but we wanted to tell you just a quick little bit about our company and what we're doing, and then I'll get into the details of variance.
So, Cradle, we manufacture manhole liners for wastewater manholes. We also manufacture liners for rehab solutions. And this is really a company that, you know, it really, we're working hard to save taxpayers all across North America, you know, money on their infrastructure and rebuild them in a way that's going to last for many, many years to come. You know, a lot of the other products out there, it's a repeat process where what we provide lasts for 50, 80 years or more. So, this is a, what we do is really unique, and we're trying to bring, you know, really livable wages to the area, provide jobs with livable wages and produce something that saves people all across North America a lot of money, I guess.
So, with that said, we, we recently, the start of 2024, purchased about seven acres on the corner of Jeanette and Hood. We are in the process of developing that. We're currently renting off of Don Westbrook, so just kind of cat a corner. We, our original intent was to buy the shop we were in and buy the lot next door, but we couldn't come to an agreement with the landlord, so we're moving in this direction. We've been in operation in Jasper since late '22 and have had quite a bit of growth, so we need this extra room. We're going from about 24,000 square feet to, let me say, 34,000 square feet with the initial two buildings that we're putting up with the plan to be able to expand onto the end of one building if we need more warehouse storage or production room. So, I know it sounds like a lot of space, but we use a lot of advanced technology. I think a couple of benefits, we're an extremely quiet operation. Most people come in our front office and say, "Is anybody here working?" Like, "Yeah, they're all back there working." Because I know there's a big concern that we're right across from residential. So, I, you know, and the mayor's already come over and expressed concern for the neighborhood about, you know, their words, they're terrified about what we're going to do. And in my mind, I'm thinking, well, we're quiet, we employ under 10 people, we do one shift, rarely work weekends, and we're going to block most of what they don't like seeing, which is the, you know, the Stanbridge Building behind us. So, anyhow, just kind of going through the, just our thoughts on why we're hoping that we can move forward on the variance requests. I know one of the matters is unnecessary hardship, and I find that, so with this one, I feel like the hardship is created as a result of, you know, we have, when I've done my research, it doesn't seem that it's terribly common for somebody zoned industrial to have to apply the same rules as far as the architectural design, the facade, the finestrations, so commercial versus industrial. So, I feel like that definitely is a unique situation to us. I realize this is what your ordinance is, but to me, that does seem a hardship, and it kind of, it blindsided me. We weren't expecting, I think, that level of, to hear that you've got to have 80%, I think it's 80%, 80% of the building covered with brick or something else. That's a lot when we're talking about buildings that are 125 feet long. So, you know, and I just, with the industrial buildings, often we need to have a larger building and design in the ability to accommodate the heavy and bulky equipment and machinery. I mean, it is a manufacturing operation. So, you know, for us, I think first and foremost, the design is often focused on the functionality and the safety, and then aesthetics following that. And by no means, even if we weren't having to have the conversation about the finestration in the facade, I can assure you our owner would not allow us to have an ugly building. He's got, you know, seven acres of buildings in Germany alone, and they're beautiful. He's, you know, for him, it's like if you walk in our manufacturing facility, it's going to be spotless because that's his standard. So, we run a clean operation, aesthetically pleasing. But I do want to point out, you know, like our office area, for instance, that's going to be very much visible from our driveway on Jeanette, and the driveway's just for employee use, not trucks or anything, but it'll be very visible. And that, we, all the finestration requirements are met, all of it will be block or stuff, probably not block, but some sort of nice deck or a stone. We still, even though, and I'll get into the screening in a minute, but we still plan on doing about three foot, if the variance was approved, three foot brick around the building to all parts that may potentially be visible, just because if somebody's on the property visiting, it does look nice. You want to break up that building, so kind of bringing the brick up to the bottom of the windows. So then, going on to conditions which are peculiar to this piece of property. So, again, I talked a little bit just about the zoning restrictions and the fact that we're industrial, but we have to comply with commercial. I do feel that that's peculiar. But I want to point out, so, obviously, there's a built-in requirement that we need to have the screen, we need to have a berm, we need to have trees and/or, no, we need to have the trees and then a berm and/or a fence. We've talked about doing all three, we've talked about doing just two of them, but as it stands, there's already, I think it's a three-foot-tall berm, that's got some two-year-old trees on it now that are about six foot high, and our architect and I, it's in the, it's in, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Sorry. When Elizabeth puts her stuff on the screen, you'll see she's got some pictures of it as well, kind of our projections for how much of, you know, the building is actually going to be visible with our existing berm, our existing trees, and additional berm, additional trees. You know, it's, to me, it's strange, I have to, I'm requesting this variance for a whole side of a building, but really, of this 20-foot-tall building, right now, before the trees grow up, you're going to see maybe about six feet of that top section. So, I just kind of want to put that into perspective because I feel like it's really not going to take much time for these trees to fill in and continue to block out the rest of that building. Let's see. And then we do, so the southeast end of one of our buildings, so as I stated, we have one building that runs kind of the length of Jeanette, and the southeast end of it, we are requesting a variance to not have to do any of the finestration or the 80% brick to that side, because that is our designated point to be able to expand when we're ready to build onto the building. And it would just be a waste to have to scrap all of that when we know that's the point. We already have in our design plantings to kind of go along that end of the building, or not that end of the building, but, what is it, it's down near the retention pond area, but it would serve as another screen, and, you know, we're certainly, we're happy to look at more plantings, more trees, more things if that would provide a more satisfactory screen for that area. Something else that, and it, I don't know if this is, I guess I'm kind of out of order, bouncing around a little bit, I'm sorry. But when we were just kind of looking at, we were looking at the maps and where there is industrial property, it appears at this point, there's only maybe a couple of actual industrially-zoned lots left in town that have not been developed. And so, part of me is like, this stinks. These are really high standards for the last couple of lots being developed. And again, we, we want to make a nice property. We, we understand what the goal and what the intent is, but it's just strange that there's so few lots, and I get it, somebody wants to tear down an old one, build a new one, you have these upgraded standards, but it's, to me, it's just tough to swallow that there's so few left, and all of a sudden, this standard is just so much higher as far as the coverings on the building. There was another item that said such conditions are not a result of the actions of the property owner, and there was a comment that it is our action, it is a result of our action because we chose to build this kind of building, the pre-engineered metal building. And I just want to explain that that was our choice, but it was a choice based on the requirements of our manufacturing processes and our future plans. If we had a building made of any other material, we would require additional supports for the roof, and at that point, it deprives us of the clear, open floor space we need. We have big parts we move around inside. So, if I'm having to put up a building other than this metal building, now I've got obstacles in the way keeping us from being able to move and do the things we need to do with the open space that we require. We do have a plan to implement overhead cranes, that's- That's part of the other reason we need that open space to be able to move sometimes our robots or large parts that we're building.
And the steel framework in the metal building provides the ability to attach that overhead crane to, where if we were built out of anything else, we have to build the same structure that we're building now inside of what we already have. This doesn't make any sense.
So I just wanted to be clear that it's not that we're trying to go the quickest, cheapest, easiest way on the building, but it's really what we need for what it is we do. And then, if relief was granted, there would be no detriment to the public. And I just wanted to say that we do believe our variance requests are in line with the spirit, the purpose, and the intent of our ordinances. Because of the variety of screens that we're going to have, the limited amount that will be exposed immediately after everything's planted and done, but even so much less within one to two years' time. We're also gonna be covering up the bright white manufacturing building behind us, hopefully with all of our screens screening some of the noises that come from there and go to the neighborhood, and also covering up some of those stacks. So we'll be the ones collecting all that white dust that flies around out there. So, I think, you know, I know it seems like a lot, and I said this already, but to make the request to go from 10%, that's what I was misstating, it's 90% of the building has to be covered. So 10% visible metal to 80%, I know it sounds like a lot, but in my mind, I'm thinking a lot of it already is going to be screened and covered. It's just a minimal part that for a period of time will be visible. I've explained the request to excuse us from the finestration along that southeast end. I wanted to point out that even though that long end, we talked about facing Jeanette, it'll be screened. I think our design plans have, on average, we're looking about 12 and a half linear feet between each window. So we're more than surpassing that linear foot requirement on the finestration where it, where to us, it seems feasible and appropriate. Again, just that one end because we want to be able to expand onto it. And we bought the building specific with that wall to be able to do this. So I think, I think that covers everything that I had to say or that I wanted you all to hear today.
Yeah. And so I'd just like to finish by saying, you know, I really appreciate you guys giving us the time and fairness, and I really hope that you consider that what we're trying to do here would really appreciate your support for. It's more than just us, it's more than just Jasper. You know, this is all part of, for everybody in North America. I mean, we're saving, we're helping the environment, we're creating some good jobs for people, and we're saving top taxpayers, everyone money. This is bigger than just what we're doing here. So any kind of support that you could give us would be huge for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, President Commission. So again, next item is for Cradle. It is for their new built-in suit office, manufacturing, and storage facility located just west of the intersection of Hood Road and Jeanette Drive. Cradle is here this evening requesting a total of four variances, all from the city's built-in design regulations. So the first variance is to increase the allowed metal on publicly visible exterior building facades from 10% to 80%. The second request is to utilize prohibited stock pre-engineered metal building skins. The third request is a variance to reduce the required finestration on the publicly visible exterior facades from 35% to 6%. And the fourth request is a variance to eliminate the requirement to provide finestration or entryways a minimum of every 20 linear feet along the southeast building facade. So a quick overview of the site context. The subject property is approximately 7.74 acres in size and is located just west of the intersection of Jeanette Drive and Hood Road. It is zoned M1 general industry, which allows for the proposed office, warehouse, and manufacturing uses as a matter of right. And it is served by city water and sewer. So a bit more of the site context from the ground to the north. There is other light industrial development within the sort of Don Westbrook industrial park area. To the east across Jeanette Drive are single-family residences, zoned R1 low-density single-family residential. To the south is the Shoe Plant Industrial Park that is also zoned M1 general industry. And to the west is the Standard Color Corporation Manufacturing Facility that is also zoned M1. And as Jennifer alluded to, this is a 24-hour operation over there. So again, each of Cradle's requests comes from the city's building design regulations, which are generally intended to improve the aesthetic quality of the city. You know, this is one of the first, if not the first, industrial developments to come through since these regulations were adopted with our 2023 ordinance update. And then I do kind of see on the image here, you can see how some of these elements that Jennifer was talking about in terms of the screening with the fencing and the berm will help to sort of mitigate some of the visual impacts from the metal inaccessible requirements and the reduced finestration. So one thing that I think is important for this overall conversation is to acknowledge the surrounding zoning pattern. So, you know, typically, you like to see a gradient in between zoning districts where you've got, you know, the more intense district buffered by some of these kind of more intermediate districts before you get to the, you know, less intense residential zoning. But in this particular case, you've got the M1 that is immediately adjacent to the R1. And that is why we require our most stringent sort of land use buffer type, which is that buffer type B. And so just to kind of show you what that looks like, this is an excerpt from Cradle's site plan. So the building that sort of parallels Jeanette Drive will be their production facility. It's approximately 15,000 square feet. And then the building that's perpendicular to Jeanette, the front portion of that will house their office. It's about 1,890 square feet. And then behind that will be their storage area that's approximately 15,400 square feet. See, these are, you know, pretty decent-sized buildings. And so because you have the industrial that's immediately adjacent to the residential, we require the buffer type B, which is a 30-foot physical separation. And then on top of that requires a combination of berms, fences, and tree plantings to, you know, provide a visual separation in addition to that physical buffer that's being provided. So per Cradle's approved site plan, they currently have a six-foot berm with an eight-foot fence and tree plantings that will help to, again, really screen the bulk of that building that runs parallel to Jeanette Drive. And so these are the elevations as they would look without the buffer screening. So these are their, this is the proposed elevation, but again, this does not contemplate the buffer. So the areas outlined in red are what we would calculate the facade areas based on. And so the top portion there, that is the southeast building facade that we've been talking about. This facade will be entirely the stock pre-engineered metal skin, but as the Cradle team indicated, this is to contemplate the future expansion that would come off of this portion of the building. And so that is why they're requesting the variance to relieve the linear footage finestration requirement on this facade. And also, before I get too far along, as a kind of quick refresher, finestration is basically when you incorporate openings, such as windows or doors, that would help to break up a really long monotonous building facade. And so we incorporated our finestration requirements into our commercial standards. Again, just to sort of improve the aesthetics of the city and to make some of these larger buildings a little bit more inviting, especially like, you know, from a human-scale standpoint. So back to the elevations. The bottom right elevation there shows where the office will be located. They do intend to have a full-height brick veneer on the office. And this will really be the most publicly visible facade because this facade will not be shielded by that land use buffer because it's sort of more proximate to where their driveway is located. So this is really, it's important that they do the veneer here because this is the most prominent portion of the facade. And then on the bottom left, you've got that longer parallel facade that's gonna run along Jeanette Drive. However, this will be, for the most part, screened by the required land use buffer. So as a comparison, this is what the elevations will look like when the land use buffer is in place. So there will only be about six feet in height of the metal building that will be able to be seen before you get to the standing seam metal roof. And you can just kind of see here how that does, you know, provide a pretty meaningful visual buffer to help screen the building. I also wanted to include some renderings that their architect provided that sort of show, kind of from a more realistic standpoint, how the buildings will be oriented and buffered by the land use buffer. This just again kind of conveys how well it will be screened by that buffer that is being provided, that is really kind of unique to this property, not necessarily related to the variance criteria, size, shape, or topography, but just more so to the character of the area that this is in. And then here's just kind of again, another review just showing with the grade differential and the buffer, you know, how visually screened this will be from a perspective of somebody who's driving along Jeanette Drive. So the variance criteria for our zoning ordinance are a little bit different from the site ordinance criteria. There are five of them, and they're inclusive, meaning that they should all be met to constitute granting variance relief. So the first criteria is that exceptional conditions pertain to the property in question because of its size, shape, or topography. So staff believes that this is not meant because the property is, you know, seven acres, it's flat, and it's essentially development-ready, and this is new construction. The second criteria is that application of the ordinance to the property would create an unnecessary hardship. Here again, staff believes that this is not meant as the applicant could veneer and finestrate the publicly visible building facades to comply with these regulations. The third criteria is that the exceptional conditions are peculiar to the property involved. Here again, staff believes that this is not meant as all new commercial and industrial development within the city is subject to these regulations. The fourth criteria is that exceptional conditions are not the result of the property owner. This is not meant as the applicant is choosing to utilize the stock pre-engineered metal buildings without the required amount of veneer or finestration. And then the fifth criteria is that relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good nor impair the purposes or intent of the zoning ordinance. This is also not meant, while it would obviously be detrimental to the public good, approval of the variances would challenge the intent of our building design regulations, which are intended to apply to all new commercial development and again, enhance the overall aesthetic quality of the city. You know, these regulations were very intentionally adopted in 2023 at the direction of some of our council members who had just kind of generally become fatigued with some of these stock metal buildings. You know, you see them on Liberty Lane, you see them on Harmony Court, the Don Westbrook area, Confederate. And so I think there was just kind of this idea that, you know, we can do a little bit better here in the state limits. So with that, staff is recommending denial of the request due to failure to satisfy our established criteria. However, in the primary of the request, we recommend three conditions. The first being that the metal on the publicly visible facades shall not exceed 80% of the visible facade area. I do want to note that, in speaking with their architect, we did build in a little bit of a buffer there. It's probably closer to like 72% where they're at, but they're still working through processing their elevations. So we did want to have a little bit of will-o'-room just in case they needed some flexibility. The second condition is that a minimum of 6% finestration is required across all publicly visible building facades. And then the third and final condition would be that upon future expansion, the southeast facade would be required to comply with the finestration requirements or pursue variance relief. So with that, that is my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a few. The second variance they're requesting, that's on the total building, correct? Just on the portion where they discussed where they were, future expansion?
Well, so these, the building design regulations only apply to the publicly visible facades, which we have deemed essentially the office facade, the facade that parallels Jeanette, and then the facade that faces towards Hood and Jeanette. But the metal skin without any veneer, just like the stock metal skin that comes when you buy the prefab building, that material in and of itself is prohibited, but again, only on the publicly visible facades.
So would they have to just, they'll be looking at breaking those visible sides only?
Yeah, so that, again, these only apply to essentially those three sort of facades. Everything else that's not publicly visible or that faces private property or industrial, that does not apply. It's just you can't have this stock skin without any veneer on it in the areas that are visible to the public.
The fine veneer, what are the options that they could have?
So, you know, they can do like stamped concrete, stone, and they can essentially just apply it or fix it to the prefabricated metal building facade. There are some examples of where this has been done in the city. Some particularly great one, but the...
The gas station.
Okay, so the gas station, that, this one is a good one. The gas station downtown the Texaco. You know, that was all kind of that stock skin, and then they veneered it with the brick to make it kind of blend in better with the surrounding environment, so.
Have you costed that out?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to know?
Yes, sure.
We're looking at 80 to 100,000 for the additional brickwork beyond what we're proposing.
I thought that was just for what we already have.
No, that's on top of what we have. To be original.
Was it some M1 when the gentleman purchased it?
It's been zoned M1 for a long time.
So they knew. I mean, I'm assuming whoever bought it did their own work when they knew there was some limitations on what could be built there?
No, we were told it was industrials, and everything around it was, is complete metal. There's no brick or any windows in any of them, so we assume, this is...
We have to find M1 and what is allowed and not allowed when they...
So we had, staff did will lead, and I think that the property was purchased, I think it was provided as part of the application. I think that the property was purchased by Cradle after these standards were in place, but they were relatively new, you know, to sort of acknowledge where they had...
Well, I think it's pretty important if it's before, after. Do you know it was after?
Yes, yeah, we can staff confirm that it was after.
We purchased January of '24.
So it was after their...
Yeah, it was adopted in '22.
The finestration is just for aesthetics, it has nothing to do with OSHA at all?
I'm not, I'm not a building code expert. I do think the building code does maybe have some finestration requirements in terms of ventilation.
Okay, that was my concern, especially with industrial. My follow-up question was gonna be, what type of machinery are you utilizing if ventilation is a concern for this?
So you can see along the top of the building, maybe not great, but we do have the high-up fans built in. We also have a total of 10 windows along that lone wall, roll-up bay doors on the opposite side of the building. So the machinery we operate are mainly plastic welders, hot wire cutters. We have a seven-axis milling machine, CNC robot, so...
Router.
Router. We're gonna have some materials we spray, but we're gonna have separately properly ventilated roofs.
Can you use some forklifts?
Yes.
Are they electric or propane?
Electric.
What would the fence look like?
I mean, we were just gonna, it's gotta be opaque. So we were, I think we were talking about just like the white vinyl fence.
And then that, the berm fencing and foliage, that's all gonna be required regardless of...
So it requires a combination of any of the three. Cradle's current approved site plan notes that they intend to have the eight-foot-tall fence sitting on top of the six-foot-tall berm plus the offset Georgia Giant plantings. So their approved plan indicates that they're gonna do all three. If they were to deviate from that, they would have to amend their site plan.
And I think it was mentioned that Kirk got some feedback from the residents across the street, the four homes apparently across the street.
You spoke with the mayor?
Yeah, Kirk came over and introduced himself to us a few weeks ago when we were at the job site meeting with the contractor.
And he said to us that everybody was quite terrified of what was going up there. But, you know, in my opinion, what we're doing and our hours that we run and this whole thing is operational rerun, what we're screening, what they're looking at now, I think we're probably the best fit for that area than anything else that might go in there.
What kind of shipments are you getting?
Shipments? So we, we'll get a container, a 40-foot container periodically. When I say periodically, maybe six of them a year. Our entrance is going to be off of Hood where the stop sign is, and we're gonna be paving that and redoing all of that. So everything will have to come in off of Hood. So we get maybe six of those a year. And then like a regular drive-in semi.
Ever busy, it's two, two a week.
Yeah, two or three.
And all of those are, you're shipping and receiving entrances strictly off of the road?
Yeah, yeah, we, we...
Not off of Jeanette, so there's...
No, that was part of our agreement with all the planning. The only people that can use that entrance off of Jeanette would be, like, the... The only people that can use that entrance off of Jeanette would be like visitors to the front office or employees, and like I said, I think right now we have seven employees in total. We're not a massive, we're never going to have a ton of people right there.
Your storage facility is where you're going to be looking at the crane going in there? Or is that going in the production?
It would be in the production, so.
In main production. In your storage facility, how, how tall are you looking for your, your storage shelving to be?
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet? And you're utilizing forklifts and such in the areas in storage?
Yes.
So my biggest concern is for the residents. If I was living in one of those homes, so I'd be at this meeting tonight, which I'm kind of surprised that they're not able to show up at the council meeting and provide some input. I think it's really hard for us, it's hard for me to really have a point of view without hearing their point of view. And it's just not about you, because you're building something that's going to be great, I get that. But in five to seven years, if things don't go great and the property's sold, who knows what goes in there? And I would be thinking about that if I was a resident, and I would have some serious, serious concerns if that was going in front of my home. So I, I feel like we're a little bit handicapped, I'm handicapped, in making a kind of a judgment or decision without understanding those four homes, those four families that are right across the street, that are going to be looking at this every day for a long time. How do we really adequately approve or deny? I don't know. It's hard. It's really tough.
And that's something, when we went through the planning process of this and, you know, we sat down, we were very, I was very deliberate in conveying the, look, we are right next to residential. And for, for what it's worth, the landscaping portion and, you know, although it is part of a bar, you know, a thirty-foot buffer, you know, this tree here, that tree there, they have gone above and beyond with the plantings to make it look attractive. The fact that those, those arborvities have stayed alive for two years. I am, I am, I am more than thrilled. That was one of my first things when I got here. Kirk was just like, we need some buffer over there, nobody ever did it. So that was one of those, those things where, you know, we were able to get that adjusted. And I, I think, you know, when looking at this and I definitely think down the line and so forth, these are things that we are very deliberate in thinking about too, so I'm glad that you mentioned that. I think the, the bigger concern that we had from a staff point of view was actually not the side for the residential. It was actually the side coming down the street was the real concern. And so where it is tricky, where that's where they want to expand in the future, and it's, it's kind of one of those things where we can't really put a condition on a site plan because they're, if they comply with it to the point where they can get, you know, a variance. You know, it's, it's, it's that portion that's the difficulty when looking at, you know, it's...
Does the fourth condition provide enough protection? I think there was a fourth condition on there that they added, add doors and windows.
Yes, so that, yes, that expansion.
For future expansions, that provided enough that makes...
I mean, whereas the, the interim, well, until the expansion, we're going to see that side where it is.
And will, okay. And it could be three years, it could be five years, it could be never. Correct?
I mean, why say in theory, yeah?
I said, I mean...
I kind of have a unique perspective having lived in one of the four houses on the land. So I, I understand the concern for that, even with the amount of, you know, landscaping foliage that you plan to put there to make it as appeasable. They die, they, you know, we have winter months where they're not as green and still very visible. For there, the noise, because it's relatively quiet in that general area. I also have further concern with her being, I mean, I understand that there's, that most of your shipping or receiving is coming off of the road, but there is a nursing home out there, so there's a restraint out there for, you know, any type of traffic control or anything like that with shipping or receiving coming out. So I have a unique perspective, and I, I understand where they're coming from with the noise and, and things like that. And even with, you know, being relatively quiet as, as manufacturing goes, there is noise added to that with, with shipments and loading. What are your, what are your hours of operation?
Seven to three.
Monday through Friday.
Sorry, through three.
Am I allowed to ask questions? Just the, so with what we're talking about, and this is just more devil's advocate, I'm just curious, wanting to understand. You talk about the concern about the, the trucks, and so in my mind, I'm just thinking with what we're talking about today, I, does that impact any of this with talking about the fenestration of the building? I mean, we want, we truly want to be a good neighbor. We really do. We know what it's like to have bad neighbors. But I'm, I'm just trying to...
So with that entrance off of Jeanette, there will be signage that says, you know, no trucks, not a truck entrance. Now, one thing that we discussed with this was, okay, so if you're coming down towards it and you're a box truck and you're going to have to swing to come in there. So we all came to that conclusion that it was not going to be safe to have trucks coming in that way, and that's why it's at a control stop. Now, I know it may seem like there aren't any repercussions if that does happen, but it is a violation of our code. So, you know, with everybody in their Ring cameras, in which case everybody sends me Ring camera footage all the time. Like, there's not supposed to be construction vehicles that are going down this road. I have to be like, oh God, all right, I'll call them and be like, stop using this road. But not to say that, that diminishes what, what you're saying, but we have also been very thoughtful about that because of the size of the entrance and...
And the sheer size of Jeanette just in itself, it's, it's like it's very small.
We've done, I mean, we're, we're doing a hefty upgrade to that little dirt road. With the amount of money we're putting into that and the area behind, behind the backside of the shop so the trucks can swing around and do what they need to do, I can assure you, we'll kick them in there. You know what, if they start driving through the front.
I think they're going to be happier to use the other road than they would try to, with the rear nettle driveway anyway.
Yeah.
And we do have a, a code requirement for plantings as well, so they have to live. So if they die, I come back and say, either you do it or I do it, and then I'm going to charge you this much more and...
It is, it is our intent to do more of the evergreens along the front too, because then we don't have to worry so much about seasonally how much of that, that screen is there.
Yeah, and that's why you have those arborvities, because they're year-round and they're, you know, that, that type of planting, the evergreens, the arborvities, they don't, they're good for blocking.
But I do just want to butt in at this conversation with what I do think Jeanette was kind of leaning at. The question in front of you tonight is about building design, it is not about land use. So like this is allowed by right, FedEx, if they wanted to come in tomorrow, is allowed by right. So these are all certainly fair and important considerations, but you really do have to look at this objectively at building design. So I just want to keep that open.
So to bring it back to building design, I don't see anything in here, do we have any artists' rendition of what that southeast side is going to look like before, before the proposed expansion? Is it just a plain wall?
This is what it would like, would look like before the expansion?
Just a plain wall.
Wall of the stocks.
And, and that's part in why, so this is, I don't know if you can see, this is the same thing as that, it's just a little bit bigger.
Okay. And you're not going to wrap the fence around?
So, I mean...
If that was a recommendation, we would be willing.
Here's the thing, that if, if more fence and more trees helps us get to that next level, we're okay with that. Trees are great. A little bit more fencing isn't the end of the world. That's negotiable, certainly.
Because I'd be leaning more towards accepting that variance request if there is another condition that, that berm, that fence, that foliage is expanded to the edge of where the drainage area is.
No problem with that.
Yeah.
Because that will probably be required once the addition is put in anyway.
Sure.
So that it would not be required when the addition is put in, because the zoning context right there would remain unchanged? But we, you know, we can require it up until, or if you, you, I mean, you could memorialize in a condition that it would be required even if the expansion comes online. And that would need to be memorialized in the condition, because otherwise it would not be required.
Okay, and I agree with him, because if things go sour and you have to mend your business, now there's a building there that nobody cares to expand.
This is why we need your support so we don't go sour.
And, and that, you know, but, and, but that's the other reason too, the thought behind the evergreens, because it's already been made clear to me, if those trees die, I'm going to be getting a phone call because we had some of the cuts who were strangling them at one point.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so yeah, no, I mean, I, I feel like there is an added protection in there because if the trees do die, if we're not there, someone else is going to be forced to replant.
So would the consideration of the condition be to carry that buffer around to the, to the, that southeast facade?
To extend around the southeast side? I'm not sure how the proper wording should be for that, but yes, I'd like that condition. Because that Jeanette, the proposal with the berm, it, it seems to me that it will cover up the building enough.
So then Commissioner's side, I guess, with respect to condition number three, about that it would be required, if they do expand in the future, would you want to leave that in there that they would still have to comply with the fenestration? Or do you feel that by extending the berm and the fence, that that would be sufficient? And are we doing berm and fence or just fence?
So I, I think if, when we expand, I think we'll probably want to put windows and doors over there.
Yeah, we would...
So it, it looks better, and I think that employees will like it better having the window to look out of, less a little more light in.
Ideally, again, because there would be the fence and the berm and the trees, we bring that three foot of brick around and then have the doors and windows on that side, if we were able to, just so it all matches. It'd be kind of weird to have it ninety percent bricked and, and the rest...
Yeah, I would say we leave the fenestration in, because ideally, you know, things are built, hopes and plans, and, you know, things change in the future, so I think we leave the fenestration in.
So just adding the, are you...
And add the buffer.
Are we trying to add to that third condition or are we just...
I just wanted to confirm that you would intend to keep that, that they would, even if they continue to screen around...
I would say to keep that one.
That you would like to... Okay. And just to confirm, the buffer, you say to extend the buffer, are you referring to the berm and the fence and the trees? All three? Like the exact same thing that they're treating in that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you agreeable to that? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like approximately two hundred feet. It's about four hundred feet, so it would be about the halfway point. Looks like that would work.
But we can, can we argue with you on the exact width, the architect and...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're not...
It'll just be two hundred. We're going to openly word it so that it can be easily interpreted on the other end if it happens, if it needs to go this way a little bit, instead of saying, you have to go two hundred feet this way and stop here, and it turns out you need two hundred and two feet. I know I'm strict, I know I'm strict, but, you know.
We have a doubt of you, if you're going to help me.
But this will come to council next week?
Yes, well, next Monday, the second.
I would highly encourage you to get this visual in front of those residents. If it was me, I would come to council with their blessing. Because otherwise, we have to protect them, and we have to protect their properties, and that's why we have these. So I, I'm just really still troubled by their perspective.
I can appreciate that.
And we can, staff could be the liaison between, maybe some of those neighbors, if, if you feel like...
I mean, we'd certainly be open to, I know when we met with Claire, I said, oh my gosh, you and the neighbors, come over and see what we're doing right now. One, just walk in at any point and listen. I, I just think they'd be shocked at truly how quiet it is what we do. And golly, when we have all these trees up, it's going to help provide such a barrier to what will then be behind us. There will be so much less of that, they'll see, and they'll have, I think, a lot of trees in it. Does it pose just a big block?
I think the concern is definitely for the sound and definitely for the things that are going on there. But I also think that the concern is for future, I've committed, if things happen and you guys have outgrown that particular lot and have to move to another lot, the next business that moves in there as well, there's a concern for that, you know. So I, I think that that's the huge concern, and I think we need to put in place compromises for, for not just what we're looking at now, but futures as well, you know, those, and to protect the citizens of Jasper that have lived there and called that home for many a year. You know, I think that we require that, that oversight for them.
So what, what I would like to mention also, maybe it's noteworthy, is that our, we did increase the insulation in the building. I don't know the exact numbers, I just know that we increased it, and that will go even further.
Is that insulation for straight heat or is that like thermostat control or is it sound dampening insulation as well?
It's probably more for thermostat control, because again, we're just, we don't need...
I, I need to step in, and I just need to remind everybody in the room that we are only going to make a recommendation to city council. So we can sit here all night and we made these things, we want you to do that, we want you to do this, we want you to do that. It really depends on the city council to approve all this. So they are the final step that you need to take. We will send our recommendation to them, but whatever we say is not binding. We can say one thing and they can do the other, or they can approve it, go with this. So I just want to remind everybody in the room that they are the ones that make the final decision, not us.
Yeah.
So...
And when you all are ready to amend, we'll just do a separate vote for each separate variance request. Just have one.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we ready to go to that round?
Things are ready, so everyone.
Are we ready?
I'm trying to come up with the wording for the further, um, condition. I'm trying to say this with, if it sounds good, the proposed buffer, berm, fence, and planting must be extended to encompass the area that includes the future building expansion.
The southeast?
Maybe just get the southeast building facade?
Okay.
So yes, continue the established buffer along the, so continue the established buffer along Jeanette through the southeast elevation of, is that the, is that the storage or is that the...
Production building.
Production building. For the production building.
All right, that's your story. Variance one, to, uh, increase the, oh, I'll betle from ten to eighty percent. Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions as written, plus the additional fourth.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Three one.
Three one. Okay. Variance number two, to utilize prohibited stock pre-engineered metal building skins. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the variance with the stated four conditions.
Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, that motion does not pass.
Okay, variance number three, to reduce the required fenestration from thirty-five to six percent. Do I hear a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, and then variance number four, to eliminate the required... And then variance number four, to eliminate the required to provide finessation or entryways every twenty or liter feet along the southeast building facade. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve that fourth variance with the stated four conditions.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Did you, I'm sorry, did you vote quick?
Yes, I
All right, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will send that to the city council for their discussion and their final vote on that.
All right, and we will have that city council meeting on Monday, June second at six o'clock, and you will be required to be there as well.
Thank you.
All right.
And do I, the final thing, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, meeting is adjourned, set it on.